Well, good evening, everyone. I think it's the appointed hour. Welcome to Lakewood City Council's Council Study Session for this Monday, August 28, 2023. We have two items for discussion tonight. The first is a review of the City of Lakewood's Brand Guide and Communication and Marketing Operational Plan. So for this, we'll have our Communications Manager, Ms. Bryn Rimley, and our Coordinator Derrick Gibson give us the overview.
Two items for discussion tonight. First is a review of the City of Lakewood's Brand Guide and Communication and Marketing Operational Plan.
Not this, is it?
Communication Manager, Ms. Bryn Rimley, and our Coordinator Derrick Gibson give us the overview.
Come on up.
Does it need to be muted somewhere?
Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. We're excited to be here this evening to walk you through the Brand Guide that we've developed for the city. And before Derek gets into it a little bit further, just a little bit of background. Tonight, we're just going to go over sort of what a brand guide is and how it's going to apply to what we're doing here in Lakewood. And one of the things I'm most excited about is to have a cohesive guide, if you will, to help us as we put out our communication on this, on behalf of the city. So in the past, we've had obviously a lot of different departments put out information, but it doesn't always necessarily look the same. And we haven't really had one central spot where people can go to say, oh, I need to use a logo. What logo should I use? Some people were using a logo that was from incorporation. Some people were using a logo that they created themselves. Some people were making the logo a different color. And those are all things that we don't want to do. So this guide really, one, it helps everybody get on the same page and make sure that the communication that we're putting out looks the same and is consistent. And two, it really helps Derek and I basically be able to offer people some information and point to, okay, this is, this is how we do this, or this is why we do this. So I know sometimes people think of brand guides as, and Derek will get in this a little bit, as just being like, oh, what colors you choose to have your logo be, or that, you know, what does your logo look like? But this is really a lot more than that. This is, is basically helps professionalize our message when we communicate with the public. It creates that cohesiveness, that consistency. And frankly, it just helps us look great when we go out and market our events, when we send letters, all the different ways in which we communicate with the public. It also just helps people see and recognize who we are. So I'll let Derek go in and give more of the presentation. But I just wanted to start by saying I'm very excited to have this. It's, it's a really important piece of, of what we do.
Perfect. So just to reiterate what Bryn was talking about a little bit. Purpose of any brand guide is to establish brand recognition. Brand recognition is when people are able to identify in this instance, City of Lakewood materials simply upon viewing, hearing, or seeing those materials. So the best way that I've ever, the best way that I have heard a brand described is by the brand is the voice, and then your tone can change within the voice. So in, in a city sense, the voice is the overall brand that we put out, but each department in this may have a different tone that falls within the voice of the city. Overall, the Brand Guide supports City Council goals by increasing accessibility and transparency while improving the recognition of city materials. That goes back to the brand recognition. As I was doing research, or as we were doing research for this brand guide, we identified three core principles that every aspect of this brand guide comes down to. Those three are accessibility, representation, and consistency. Accessibility is pretty simple. Every person in Lakewood must be able to access and consume our materials despite any disability need that they may have. This includes virtually and print. Representation, all materials under the Lakewood brand must accurately represent our residents and landscapes. This is really important because, for example, we may post a picture of a lake, but it's not a picture of Lakewood. We want to make sure that all of our materials are always representing Lakewood as best as possible. And then finally, consistency. This goes once again with the brand recognition. Consistency is how we build that brand recognition. Lakewood residents must be able to recognize city materials simply upon by appearance and voice. So the everyday application, this is kind of where Bryn was talking about earlier, the traditional parts of a brand. This is your typeface, typography, logo, and color palette. We went with Monster Rot, that is a sans serif typeface. That's because as we move forward into more social and virtual aspects of communications, people read sans serif typefaces better through screens. They're able to consume that material better. So that's why we went with Monster Rot. And then the logo. The correct, the correct professional and consistent use of our logo is vital to maintaining our image and community pride. We have narrowed it down to these two versions. And using brand recognizability, we should be able to put just the medallion on materials as we develop our brands. And people will be able to, without it saying City of Lakewood, will just know that it is a City of Lakewood material. On the right, you will see the color palettes. Many businesses and other governments use two or three colors. We decided that that would be relatively difficult, so we developed a color palette. Lakewood blue is the base color. So right now, if you were to go on our website, the buttons, the banner, all the accents, that is the Lakewood blue. But then each color individually was sampled from a photo of Lakewood. So Wild Hop Moss, that is literally, I went in, I took a photo, I didn't take the photo, but I went to a photo and sampled it. So each of these colors is unique to Lakewood. No other city or anything has these colors.
Is that with or without the alum treatment?
We didn't do toxic algae. We just went for tree moss, so.
Very good.
So I sampled the, off of their uniforms, their patch. So I sampled specifically a name tag off of a police uniform.
Yes.
The yellow.
But we're not calling them yellow.
Mr. Brant, sorry, you had a question?
So this is a guide that's intended to be used by city overall, including us when we create something that we're going to put out to, to folks to do that.
So our hope would be if you're going to create something to put out on behalf of the city, you would work with us to create that for you, and then we would use this. So that's one of the things, actually, we've been going around to all the staff meetings and talking to them. And we've created a communication request form, if you will, that might say like, I need an invitation for volunteer recognition. Can you please create this? And we would use the Brand Guide to design that, to send that out. So anything that's officially coming out on behalf of the city, we're asking to have it come through communications just to make sure it's meeting our Brand Guide, or we can create it and develop it for you.
But if I'm trying to draft something to show you what I want, okay? What are all these codes under these colors? How do I create that online?
You let us do it. Yeah, yep. Because we can do it like that with the design programs that we have. So you can say, hey, I really like American Lake Sun. Can you make me something that I'm going to use for this with these colors? You can let us know, you know, down to the last drop of what you want, and we can create that for you, work with you, and, and have it available for you to, to put out.
Yeah, well, and there, there goes the assumption that I start out knowing what I want. But that, so if you create something, you create a file to me, and you send it to me, and it has these colors in it, is my computer going to then recognize and print things on a printer in the right color? Or does it have to go to some sort of? I mean, how, how does, how does that not get diluted when it gets passed from you to me to a printer to something? How do you maintain that? I understand if you're, you're creating it and you're sending it to a print shop, I can see that. But often things come and, you know, I think that I frequently go to get us something that's official city document, but in response to a question from someone in the community, I try, try to want to send them a copy of it, okay? As opposed to just say, well, go to the website and find it. I try to try to be more helpful than that. But do things get? How well do things translate going from computer to computer?
So every screen, you're right, is going to maybe have a different, so like your Lakewood blue might look a little bit different on your home computer versus that, the setting. At the end of the day, though, so for things like our banners, our posters, our marketing materials that we're putting out, those are the things where you're probably going to have the most color and the most saturation. Those are going to professional print shops, and then those are going to keep it. If you're emailing something, chances are it's going to probably be pretty close. Toners, of course, if you're doing an at-home printer, like, for example, my at-home printer can only be black and white. So it will grayscale it, and it'll put it out. But I think if we're looking big picture mass dissemination of information, that will come out as intended, and it won't be an issue.
All right, thank you. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. Question on trademark and copyright as we establish logos, brands, color palettes, being that we are a public institution. Do we file for that sort of thing, or how does that work?
Yes, so all of our logos are copyrighted, and we renew those copyrights. So currently, what you're seeing on here has been copyrighted. And I think, I'm trying to remember, we renewed those within the last few years. I most recently did it probably in 2019 or 2020. So yes, the, the ones that are here are copyrighted. Former ones, we have let pass as something that I worked with the city clerk on, because that's handled through her office. So the seal, the logos, all of those are items that we have trademarked, and we indicate how, what, how they'll be used and all of that, so they're protected.
What about the color palette and the names?
Um, that we haven't done, I can look into that. I don't know that we need to, but we can look to see. It's, it's more truthfully, because we do see every now and then a misuse of our logo, and I have to then reach out and let folks know, you know, please, don't use it. You know, we start out kindly, and, and most cases, people are like, oh, I didn't realize, sorry. And they'll stop. Other times, they might be a little bit more difficult, and then that's when I get to ask the city attorney for a letter and share it with them, so.
And then the next step, or next part of this is imagery. This is something we have been working really hard on, specifically on social media and the website, more of the social aspects. But public pride and trust depend on our professionalism, including in our visual storytelling. This comes back to the representation aspect of the entire core principles, making sure that we are representing our landscapes and residents correctly. Accessibility is a huge thing moving forward, once again, especially into a more social sphere. Up to set, almost seventy percent of our website, people that access our website are doing it mobilely on a cell phone. That introduces a bunch of accessibility aspects. So there's something called the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines from the World Wide Web Consortium. These are the authority, the overall authority for what you must pass for online accessibility. This all comes into the Brand Guide. The Brand Guide has been designed with these many, many steps and rules in mind. And that is another reason why we're urging all materials to come through the Communication Department from now on, from everywhere. Make sure we get our eyes on it and look at it because of this reason. And then down below, you'll see translation. This is the same thing that I did last year with the ARPA. We use G Translate, Google Translate on the website, and that is just in the Brand Guide, but that is something we have been upkeeping throughout the year.
Yes, thank you, Derek. How does AA level differ from the AAA level or the A level?
Do you have it on the next? So there are, I will try to do my best. So AA level is the legal passing. That's about seventy percent of the content on a website is accessible and uses accessible tricks. That means seventy percent of it can be accessed by anyone. That is pass. Single A is not passing. That falls below seventy percent. And then triple A is if you are up at like ninety-eight, a hundred percent of your website is accessible, which comes in, means many, many different things. Double A just means that we are sufficient and passing by their guidelines.
And by, I was just gonna say real quick, by the standards, double A is really what everyone wants to be at. Triple A is actually very restrictive, and it's really not, um, it's, you know, some of these think, oh, I want to be at the best, right? And triple A is the best. In fact, for web accessibility, double A is where most people really want to be and should be, because that allows them to have the freedom for some of the, the design elements while still meeting the needs of the people who are consuming the information. So you're not being dinged, per se, because you're not providing information in a way that people can consume it. So it's, that's kind of the sweet spot. You want to be at double A.
So who evaluates us? I mean, who's looking at our things and saying, oh, you did, did or didn't not pass?
We are. So we, we, Derek actually is, right now, this summer, been spending a lot of time going through every page again and running against all these different accessibility tracker tools. There isn't someone who's out there, per se, checking your website to tell you, there's not like a, it's not like the auditor's office that comes through and audits us for finance. We're not at that point yet. I expect maybe one day we could be. But you could face a member of the public who might say, this isn't accessible to me. And so it's kind of all still frankly getting figured out, because it is still relatively quote-unquote new in the world of just the digital sphere and how things are evolving. So there's not like an authority that comes around and dings you or checks, but it's just best management practice to make sure that your site is adhering to this. And so that's why Derek's been running through, making changes, updating our site to make sure we're in that, that double A level.
So how many attributes or criteria are there in this evaluation process? Is there like, there are fifty things that go into become being a, whether a minimum standard to be a double A, or are there ten, or how is that?
Um, so there are many factors that go into this. I use a website directly from, provided, it's an auditing website, provided directly from the people who made these rules, the World Wide Web Consortium. Basically, what I do is I take our website, I plug it into this, and it'll tell me if there's errors on this website. And then I go through and I fix all of the accessibility errors. So this goes, there's a lot of things that fall into what is required to be accessible. So fillable forms, we have to make sure that it's being translated correctly. Everything has to be accessible via screen reader. Everything has to be able to be accessed with the enter key. I have to be able, so I have been going by every page and hitting enter to make sure every link is accessible. PDFs have to be labeled as a PDF. So those are just a few of the things, but there's a lot.
So are there any criteria that you've identified, either in this document or just operationally, departmentally, that we want to be somewhere at a level better than double A? Maybe not already triple A, but is there, is there, is there, are there some criteria where we're okay with just the minimum double A? Or are there some that we would be better off having some other standards for ourselves, such as we're making our own rules?
Yeah, no, and I mean, to the degree, um, I think for, for us internally, the goal is to make sure everybody can access our information. And so, you know, I think that's, that's where we're at. So as Derek noted, being able to go through, if I need a screen reader, can I access this? If I don't have a printer, can I do a fillable form entirely online and submit it electronically? I mean, we're looking at just user functionality, right? Like everyday application, per se. Does that mean we're going to have a checklist? Probably not. But we are doing regular audits of our website, and we're regularly looking at any changes. The most recent kind of workbook, if you will, that was passed was three years ago. So there could be that they have another one coming up soon, and when that publishes, we'll go through it and, and follow those best practices that it says we should follow.
So this, in terms of accessibility, and it's, it's something that I hear from time to time from residents about not being able to find something on the website. I mean, how, and that seems to be related to accessibility. How often is that a criticism that you receive in one way or another? And, and, and how would you react to? Other than telling people what dummy to go here and here and here, and how do you?
Well, I will say, when we, when we remade the website in 2018, the, the really, the biggest goal of that was to make it easier for our residents to find information. I don't know if you recall our old website, but I mean, I was on it every day, and I would forget how to like find stuff. I'm like, where do I find the council agenda? Like, why can't I find it? So one of the things that we really worked toward with the redevelopment of our website was to put more information out front. So I think we've come a long way in making information more accessible. That said, if a department says, I'll give an example, actually, our rental housing safety program came to us recently and said, you know, we have a lot of folks that are having a hard time translating the website. And Spanish and Korean are two most spoken languages, where we're having folks that can't find information, or they're looking for information in their native language. So what we did is, on our permit center, we went in and we put the direct link for it in Spanish and Korean, and we put that in the native language to say, click here. If they click, it'll automatically take them to our website, fully translated into their native language using the G Translate. So we definitely, if we hear from folks, if there's trends that we're seeing, we look at that and say, okay, this is something that we can make easier by doing this. Or how can we make it easier for people to find what they're looking for? We also look at the analytics on our website to let us know where people are going. So that also tells us how often people are clicking on a page or not. So like, I might think that people want to see everything on this page, but in fact, only two people have gone there in the last month. Whereas over here, we've had five thousand people in a day looking for information. So it's kind of a combination of user experience, what we're hearing from departments, if they're hearing from people, what we're seeing on analytics. And, you know, the one nice thing about the website is it's, it's fluid to a degree. We can make changes, we can make things easier, and that's definitely something that we are listening and make those changes when we may need to.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you. This is great. I think it's definitely a step in the right direction, so that's very positive. Since we were talking about accessibility, I was wondering what you guys were doing with alt tags? And also, I know that with, we just went over the color palette. Have you looked at things that have to do with people who are affected by color? And then on top of that, I know that we also have language at the top. But have we thought about putting powered by Google Translate, that black bar that goes across the top, something that just kind of stands out, that people who maybe don't see, don't, can't read the word that says language to pull down and see all the flags, or maybe they don't know their specific flag with the couple, three letters? Something like that, just to increase accessibility? I just would like to know your thoughts on those things.
Yeah, so for every media that gets uploaded to the website, people are supposed to put in alt text. And so for those aren't familiar with alt text is, it basically allows you to describe what someone's looking at. So if I put up a photo of Deputy Mayor Moss at an event, I would say Deputy Mayor Moss at this event, you know, standing in a group of people, smiling, waving. So being, if visually I can't see it, it, at least the screen reader can read and tell me what image is on the screen. Also, for folks who may have slow internet connection, the image may not come up, so that text would come up to let people know, here's what's here. So sometimes you might see like a broken link. If you hover over it, if someone's put in the alt text, it'll tell you what's supposed to appear there. Same for PDFs. If you upload a PDF, you should do a description to let people know that, you know, this is the biennial budget. So I know that we're not a hundred percent on that, because people forget. Sometimes I get busy, and then I go back, and I'm like, oh, my gosh. So I will go back in. We do it where we can on social media as well, where, where the platform allows us to. So absolutely, that's a priority of ours. So absolutely, that's a priority of ours. As it relates to Google Translate, I know we have the bar there, but we can definitely look at where we can position it more. And I agree, if I go to like a, another country's website and I'm looking for it to translate into English, it's usually the British flag that I see and I click. So we can look at that as a, as a possibility to make it more visible. So people can see the flag as a visual cue to know this will give me more options. So.
And to answer the color, in the brand guide, I have put a whole grid of colors that are WCAG accessible on top of each other so that if people are unsure about which colors can go on top of each other, I provide that. So there.
And we try really hard also to make sure staff knows that. A lot of times people think, oh, I'm going to put something in red to get attention. And I kind of feel like I'm beating the same drum over and over, but not everybody sees the color red. So it doesn't have the desired effect for someone who can't see it. So that's one thing we've really been trying to say as well as we've been presenting to staff is, actually, if you just made this a little bigger or made it bold, it's going to have more of a visual presence than if you make it red text. So, you know, part of that is just educating folks. And then of course, with the auditing that we do of the website, those are things that when we see them, we correct them, we send a gentle reminder and, you know, keep working.
Mr. Anderson, well, I think it's a lot of good work and overdue to have the consistency and go into the depth, but I have a fundamental issue with the logo. And this is, oh, maybe this should go to the art commission. I did take my first advertising class fifty years ago, right now. That's just scary. But there were three fundamentals that always remembered, like first is the rule of thirds and composition. Second one is make sure there's white space. And the third one is there's no one color sign that can't be improved with a second color. And we have fairly consistently, we haven't consistently used it, but fairly consistently tried to represent Lakewood with the colors with the blue for the water and the lakes, green for the trees. So we got white wood, white for the, for the mountains and blue for the sky. And that's boring. A black dot. Now, there's some iconic black and white logos. Nike is one. But go look at how many different Nike shoes there are, and they don't always have a black swoosh on them. ABC is a black, a white logo, but NBC, CBS are different and have, and they put, you know, they put colors all around it. So we have essentially developed somewhat of a brand with our letterhead and using color. And then to start putting a black dot on everything we do, I think it loses identity rather than enhances identity. Because frankly, it's boring. So I'd like to take another look at that. I mean, it's the, the important work is accessibility and communication. But the thing that people want to, I don't think people are going to look at that and say, identify that with Lakewood. They might identify, I haven't always had, had a problem with the sign because that's called a seal on a slap, but seal isn't bad if it's in color. Or seal on a sheet, I think is what the flag people call. It's the least imaginative type of flag that you can have. We could do the logo in color on a flag and it looked pretty good. So maybe it's an art commission kind of thing. And it's certainly a taste thing, but I, I want to see, want to see color, not black and white. Nobody's bought a black and white TV set in forty years.
Councilman Bill.
Hi. So I think, don't think of that as just the logo itself. I think of it as part of as the family of the logo. So that can be black, it could be blue, it could be any of those colors as long as it's solid. And it's also easier to reproduce, I believe. So this is another reason why we're going that way. You're taking all of the lettering that's out of it, but I do think that there are times that you can use the full color logo, the seal, but as far as putting just the icon on there, the circle, the black dot that you're talking about, that could be a different color. And I mean, not multiple colors. I think in the brand guidelines, it's a solid everywhere it goes. So I am on board for that being a solid and the new treatment that you're doing with it, just because I think that it transfers a lot easier into all the places that it needs to go. Because we have all the digital media platforms, you have clothing, you have stickers, you have things wrapped. You have so many things that this needs to go on. So I see how you could apply it in different ways throughout the city and then sometimes use the seal and put your full color on there. But that's how I address a different logo that I work with too, is in the same way. So I'm here for it.
What we call the mark would be the same, though, right? Obviously, the mark with the, the seal in the lower right hand corner there.
That, we're calling that the medallion.
Medallion, okay.
Yeah.
So it'd be the same. Would the color change periodically or not within the color tones?
Um, I think it would really be on a case by case basis. So as Councilwoman Bell just said, I'll use our Fiesta de la Familia poster as an example. That's very bright, right? Because we really wanted to embrace the colors of the event. So putting a blue, green and white logo on that wasn't going to match because we've got purple, we've got yellow, we've got all these bright colors that complement each other, and that would actually really detract and pull away from it. So that would be an example where we would do like the white medallion. Because again, it's, it's not about the logo, it's about the material, it's about the message that we're getting across. Now, if it were something that is, you know, really more focused on council per se, maybe that would be an example of where we would use the blue, the green, the white combination. But in most cases, it's really a very important compliment. So it's, it's important because it's letting people know this is trusted, this is from the city of Lakewood, this is official. But again, it's, it's the compliment to the larger message that we're conveying. So from a design perspective, it's really there to just show that familiarity, that brand, but it's not there to be the centerpiece of what we're doing. And if we were to put something that had clashing colors or didn't work, that takes away from it. That said, yes, the one beautiful thing about a brand guide is when we're consulted, we can talk about ways we can break the rules. But that's something that we have to have a conversation about. There has to be thought put into it. There has to be a reason why we're doing that. So.
Mr. Anderson, so how are you going to create that brand? Because the visual is associated, the the brand is associated with the visual. You, you, you don't associate blue with a Coke can. You don't look for blue when you look, you know, so people have in, in Lakewood have some identification to seal because that says City of Lakewood nineteen ninety six. They have some association with the colors that look like the landscape. I think if you went out with a survey with that dot and asked people randomly what that represents, you would get a very low level of recognition. So you're talking about building a brand with that instead of enhancing what we have? Is that what you're going to do? And how, how are you going to, how are you going to do that? How are you going to make people in Lakewood look this and say, oh, that's, that's from the city of Lakewood?
So that medallion itself would go on something that specifically says City of Lakewood. So it'd be very clear that it's a City of Lakewood material or whatnot.
Well, that, that wasn't what was in the example in the guide.
So we have that, and then we have what we call the lockup, which is the medallion with the City of Lakewood language next to it, which is the same as what we had before. It's just updated text.
Right, but then you also said using it alone in that guide.
So there, so.
How, how do you create the identity? How are people going to end up, how are they going to go from where they are now to saying, oh, this comes from the city of Lakewood because it's got this dot on it?
So if you go on our website, in the upper left hand corner, it has the medallion with City of Lakewood. So that's an example of if I go to our website, I see the medallion with City of Lakewood. So I know it's a City of Lakewood website. I wouldn't just put that medallion by itself without City of Lakewood on the website. So there, they can both be used. It's not one or the other. It would be if it's a letterhead from the City of Lakewood, it's going to say City of Lakewood, it's going to be the lockup that says City of Lakewood. If it's a poster for Summerfest, I'm not going to put the City of Lakewood logo, but it's obvious that it's our event. We've branded that event, but somewhere on there, we are going to have the medallion. So it, it really depends on the materials that you're, you're presenting and where it's very clear that it's a City of Lakewood event. And we're saying hosted by or City of Lakewood presents, we don't need to then also put the, the medallion with City of Lakewood next to it. We can just put the medallion because we've already plastered City of Lakewood presents on top. So again, they're interchangeable depending. If it's a letterhead, absolutely, it's going to say City of Lakewood on it.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to pass this down and ask the question, is that going to go away? The logo? Or is it the medallion that we're talking about?
Yeah, so for an example of, of this, what we would do is we would replace it with one with the lockup that would have the medallion with City of Lakewood next to it. So how Harborstone has their H, but then they have the name and how Rotary has Rotary and then their medallion. We would do the same thing because to be honest, it's pretty hard to read the City of Lakewood in there as well. Now, we obviously all know it, we're familiar with it because this is where we are. But the idea is it's, it's clear to read and it's easier to see. So for something like this, yes, that would change.
Okay, thank you.
But we wouldn't ask you to go reprint new ones. It would just be when you're there.
Thank you, I just reorder.
It's going to be just like that on the website, overlap.
And then we.
Oh, Mr. Larson, yeah.
Thank you. So will there still be the opportunity to sort of honor the legacy and the history that went into why we have specific colors in our past to represent the trees and the lakes and that sort of thing and have multicolor?
Well, I think that's, that's shown in our color palette, the fact that we actually expanded it and went beyond just the green, the blue, the two color, I mean, actually, it was just green and blue were the only two colors that were on the logo. The white space is the white space. So that's part of the Lakewood blue, just bringing it, you know, bringing that forward and then all the different colors, right? That again, as Derek noted, he sampled those from photos within Lakewood. He actually created those colors himself. So he created those hex codes. No other city is going to have those exact colors because they're unique to our landscape, our photographs.
Right, using the eyedropper tool on those.
Yep.
But in general, we'll have a monochromatic medallion on individual pieces of one of those colors, not necessarily the combination that we've had in our past.
Yeah, I think where appropriate we can. And, and the seal, that, I mean, the seal itself is, that is a completely separate thing that's copyrighted. The seal is different, as you can see, because it has the frill, the spikes around it, and that is not being changed. So anything that's like the official seal of the city, that the city clerk will stamp and use, that will, that is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions to this point, Mr. Branson? And then we'll let them move along.
Yeah, I, I did have two other, two other questions about the, what was provided on in the agenda packet, which is some other things in addition to your presentation to be able to go and do that. But one is, is that we're in the midst of, or close to going through, and we're expecting to get some kind of a recommendation about signage. Okay, and are you envisioning that these same principles should be applied to a signage plan that's developed? And has that been shared with the contractor that, that we have?
Yes, I was actually on a call with them last Friday. So they have our, they have everything and we've talked about, it's, yes. The answer is yes. That's, they're aware of it, they've been using it, and they have some good examples. So I've been involved in that process from, from the, from whenever they convened our subcommittee.
Okay. And there was a section here where you talked a little bit about buy the numbers on social media, which is.
So that's actually our next slide that we're hoping to get to, if we can, or if we advance to that.
Somehow or another, I'm on a different slide. Okay, I, I, I'll wait for that, but let me just ask one other question. Is that, why was Oakbrook the only neighborhood that got a color?
That's a great question.
I mean, I mean, I think that Springbrook would like to have a color and Tillicum would like to have a color and, and, and and I don't want to make it into an equity issue that, that, that Oakbrook got color, but nobody else did, but.
Well, you know, the beautiful thing about a brand guide is there's other options that we can also incorporate into it. So as we potentially look to expand our color palette, if we do do that, we will make sure we are mindful with our naming conventions to be representative of our whole city. All right, so Derek's going to jump into the social media. We wanted to just show you guys. So again, this is something that has evolved. It wasn't like we just did it and boom, we went forward. We kind of slow ruled some of this stuff. So the numbers up here go from April to August. And it's, April is sort of when we began the process of being more mindful with what we presented on social media and how we presented it.
Um, so yes, April is roughly when we finished this document, putting all the rough tunes on it. So that is when we started to slow rolled out onto our social media. So there's a lot of numbers there. But the ones that I would specifically like to bring attention to is the city and Facebook. So impressions, what that means is that is how many people saw it with their eyes. They did not click it, they did not interact with it. They just saw it. Engagements is the amount of people that saw it and then clicked, liked, shared, touched it, whatever. At the top, you can see that it was a two hundred and forty four point five percent increase in our engagements almost immediately upon rolling this brand guide out across the city and Lakewood Police Department pages. And then down at the bottom, the police account, the police Instagram account was made last year, but it kind of sat dormant. No one really touched it. So part of this rebrand was getting that Instagram going. And since we have rolled this out, we have seen a five hundred and seventy three point three percent increase in engagements just on the police account. And then a four hundred and fifty percent increase in impressions. And then one more, ninety eight point nine percent increase in rate of followers. That does not mean that our following grew by ninety eight percent, but the rate at which people are following us increased by almost a hundred percent.
No questions on that? I'm going to just really quickly run through. Yes?
I just wanted to say, when I saw that, I was very impressed. He was on the right track. So thank you.
And then the next slide is just kind of go through the city's communications and marketing plan and sort of oversight and, and kind of our standard operating procedures, as you will, how, how the division itself operates. So the, the brand guide is obviously gonna set the guidelines for how we're going to proceed forward, but just so you understand how it's being applied or where. So real quick review, you know, the goal of our division is to strengthen our engagement. And when I say our, I mean the city engagement with our community. That, you know, is everything from raising awareness about our events to major projects where that's parks, roads, as well as city council action and the work that you're all doing here every week and every day. So the objectives, really, a lot of this is taken from your strategic plan. We don't need to have anything different than what you have set forward for our path. So that's what we follow. So objectives, you know, increase our awareness of our actions, increase engagement, awareness, making sure we're providing access so all people can be engaged, keeping up that transparency. I will say that's one thing, as an outsider, when I was a newspaper reporter, I really appreciated how transparent Lakewood was. I knew that I could get information easily. I knew that the city wasn't trying to hide anything. And that's actually something that was very important to me when I came on board and joined the city. And so I really prioritize that. I think that's something that is very important, that folks know what we're doing and when we're doing it and how we're doing it. Reinforcing credibility, providing consistent messaging, which is our social. Reinforcing credibility, providing consistent messaging, which is our social media statistics just show we are doing that. And we're doing well at that. And that's our goal is to continue to do that. You know, our, our principles, we're clear and direct. We try to let people know about things before they happen versus after. And also, we are listening to folks. So it goes back to what I said earlier, to your question about if someone has a complaint on the website or they can't find information. We're, we're listening, we're learning, we're trying to make things better. It's, it's a fluid process. Oh, sure.
So when I noticed this, it was that the logo on my LinkedIn account to the city of Lakewood went from color to black and white. And I've seen since that the city's logo on the Facebook account went to black to white. Did I miss a meeting where we were told about this? I thought you said that you tried to inform people before you did it. I think you should probably tell the city council, you're going to change the logo before you change the logo. And maybe we should have some input in that. So that's probably more important to me than the actual color.
Yep. So for the delivery channels, this is the ways in which we communicate with the public. So as you all are aware, this year is actually our first year where we're going to four magazines a year. Woo-hoo! So we're up from three to four, doing them every quarter, which is great. So those go to all 31,000 homes and businesses. Those are direct mailed to folks, or excuse me, bulk mailed to, to folks. In addition, we have our website where we post to the news and update section. So information goes up there for upcoming events, for road projects, you name it, we're, we're using that. And that, I'm sure you all have seen, that actually there's a direct RSS feed that goes to the Suburban Times. So he automatically picks up anything that we post there and then he shares that. So that's another way in which we're reaching folks is, is through that. We have a number of e-newsletters. So every week, the city manager's bulletin goes out on Friday afternoons. That's usually a roundup of either information that's happened, city council corner, where we're putting out the action or the, the work that you've been doing at your meeting that week, as well as other community events that people may ask for us to help spread the word on. Becky has begun doing an economic development news e-newsletter that goes out to people who've subscribed to that. So that's a roundup of relevant economic development information. And then we do event-specific marketing. So for example, with Summerfest, because that's a large enough event that draws such a large crowd, we did a press release where we sent that out to local media as well as magazines that specifically market within Lakewood. I was in communication with a number of our local television stations up in Seattle as well. And then we have our e-news subscriber lists where we also will do larger events where we put it on the marketing. As I noted, we work closely with news media. I make sure they're aware of what we're doing, if we have something coming up. I try to share it with them. Of course, social media, which I will say is probably our largest reach. And I do recognize that not everybody is necessarily plugged into social media. That's why we have the feeds on our website as well. So even if you do not belong to Facebook or Instagram, you still can see what we're doing there on our website. And then we work very closely with our community partners. So West Pierce Fire and Rescue, the Clover Park School District, Pierce Transit, Pierce College. I mean, we, we meet regularly and we work closely with each other to help share each other's information. For example, actually, after I'm done here, I'll be going up to print a bunch of our Fiesta de la Familia posters to give to West Pierce, who, their community outreach specialist, who's really connected to our Hispanic community, he's going to go put those out in churches, grocery stores, talk to folks, make sure they're aware of it so that they are encouraged to come on September 9th. So, you know, we're always expanding, we're always looking at ways. I think a goal for the future is doing more in-person stuff as well, where we're actually going out to where folks are, whether that's a neighborhood association meeting or a different way in which we can actually go to folks when we have something specific to be shared, kind of like I'm doing with Martin, where he's going out to hand out our posters for us. So we're actually reaching folks where they are as opposed to expecting them to come to us. And I know we've kind of gone through a number of questions, but if there's any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anything else? Ms. Bell, you were looking at some samples, the use of the standard medallion over color materials, is I think.
Well, because logos are going to more of a family of logos, variations of logos, flexibility with the logos. So I, I get that because, and using it as a solid and putting it in all the different media, it's really hard to have the little tiny type around it. You get things lost. So I, I see why you did that. And there's different ways to add color if color is needed. So I think, I mean, if you look at X, that's black and white. If you look at threads, that's black and white. I mean, I could keep going. So it's just, I understand that it transfers better mostly for digital, digital media. And that's what we're looking at most of the time. And they're actually really small. So you're not going to see all the type around it. You're not going to see the things, you need to see the pieces that are identifiable easily. And this has to start somewhere. So this is where you're starting from, to create that brand, to keep continuing going with it, to create growing on the identity of Lakewood is, which I believe we're doing also with the park signage. So I think that all of this ties in really well. Lakewood has lacked an identity. So I do feel like that this has lacked a strong identity, how about that? Or one that keeps evolving. So I see a logo as evolving. And I see it as, you know, like you said, you could, these are things that are easy to change all the time. So I do like that part of it a lot. One thing that you talked about, how staff would be coming, you want them to come to you more. So you do have more control over that. Have you guys looked into any sort of online ticketing system where people can place their job orders? Something like that, that would give you a little bit more able to track and request and proofing, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, we've created a form that folks can fill out and it'll automatically put it into a spreadsheet that will allow us that function to be able to keep track. I will say truthfully, we're probably not at the volume where there's going to be, you know.
Like an app or something versus a spreadsheet? I mean, something that actually is a system?
I don't know that we're, I don't know that we have the volume at this point to need something like that, to be honest. I think right now, we've managed it pretty well, but we're just knowing, okay, we don't want to drop the ball somewhere, right? So I, I don't know that we have the volume yet. If we do get to that point, we can look at that. But right now, we're just looking to kind of formalize it a little bit more. That side, for example, like folks that are updating their templates, I'll just work with them directly, or Derek will work with them directly. And it might be a whole suite of templates that need to get fixed or need to get updated. And so those, we wouldn't say every single template put in a request.
Even something as easy, like binder, something like that, where you can templatize a bunch of stuff. Those kinds, just something that people have a repository of places to go to. If it's not a online ticket system, but just something that's easy.
Yes.
And then that will help you guys and keep everything in control a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wild web west.
Mr. Branstad?
Under the planned goals, and spoke to the, the idea of connecting with community partners and asking them to share their things to do that. But what is our policy about reciprocating? And when people send us things and want us to share doing that, 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 that send us. And they, and I would imagine that could come from a, a great variety of sources, not just the usual big partners that we work with, like Pierce Transit or, or, or something like that. But, but could be specific community organizations that we know or maybe never heard of, but now do. But what, what, what sort of policies do we have that tells us when we will do that and how we vet material that people give us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I always use the rule of thumb, if you do for one, you do for all. So if you're going to do it for this one, you have to be willing to do it for the next one that comes in. And that's kind of the guiding lines in that a lot of times, for example, if a neighborhood wants to have us promote their garage sale, probably not going to do that. Because then every garage sale, how do we say, well, we gave them special treatment, but we're not going to give it to you. So we really do stick more to our community partners. But that said, for example, you know, that goes as far as like Lakewood Gardens. Like we promoted their Rockin' in the Roadies event because they're a community partner. They work with the city. Or if it's a, an event where the city's a part of it, where we're having some piece of it, we definitely will. But you're right, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's happening out there. And so discretion has to be used. And kind of a rule of thumb is using, you know, those community partnerships to share that information, whether it's a neighborhood association doing something or the chamber or, or something along those lines. Something lower level than that, like just a neighborhood thing, we probably wouldn't share it. The one thing I will say is social media is great because it's a little less formal. So for example, I'm not going to put a, a post on the city's page from the city saying, go do this thing that has nothing to do with the city. But maybe we'll share that in our stories as like a good neighbor. So it'll go up for the 24-hour period that says, hey, did you know about this cool event that's happening? Or hey, did you know you can sign up for this? Or we might do something like that where we're, we're being a good neighbor, but it's clear we are not sponsoring nor endorsing nor having any involvement with it.
I know, it would seem, even though you can't be very, very specific, that it would be good to at least document in writing some guidelines that you're going to use to decide that. I, I think, I think, I think, I think we do get requests from a, a, a far-ranging field of, of folks to do that. And, and, and then, and we don't want to do everything because we're, yeah. When honestly, I all, work costs us, it costs us time and it costs us dollars in terms of being able to go and do that. But I think, yeah, you, if, if you have some guidelines that you can kind of stay in, you can get away from that. You did this for them, why not for me? You know, if, if, if you can show a connection to the city for, 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 for something, to be able to go and do that, that. I just wanted to go back to the social media thing. I apologize to council member Bell, okay? That I don't understand the difference between impressions and engagement. And I didn't understand the thing that says the percentages on following didn't mean how many followers we have.
So an impression would be how many time your, how many times your content was seen by someone? So let's say you follow the city of Lakewood, but let's say council member Bell does not. But our posts perform well enough that the algorithms within Meta decided that, well, you two are often at meetings together and your phones are talking and all the tracking that they're doing of you makes you think she might want to see what you have seen. Or she's engaged with content that's similar. And so it might show it to her, even though maybe she doesn't follow the city of Lakewood, it's deciding, hey, you might like this post, right? Or maybe you shared it and because she's friends with you, she's seeing it. It doesn't mean that she's liking it. It doesn't mean that she's frowny facing it. It doesn't mean that she's sharing it on her platform. But as she was scrolling through her feed, it came up within her social platform. So I'll give an example of our senior center. A lot of the seniors tell our senior center staff that they love everything that they're putting on social media, but they don't like it, they don't engage with it because they don't trust social media. So they don't want to be tracked. So they're seeing it, but they're not actually liking or they're not sharing it. So they would be considered an impression because they're seeing it, but they're not engaging. Now, if they liked it and they hit the like button, that is now considered an engagement. Or if they took that content and they shared it to their friends on their page or their profile, that would be an engagement because they're actually in some way interacting with the content beyond just scrolling and seeing it.
So, so engagement is not passive?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, that was a lot quicker way to describe it.
And, and, and is there a way we can correct? Because I get lots of emails from people who are complaining about things in Lakewood, Colorado.
I.
I, I, I mean, did that skew our numbers?
Question, you know, I will say, we have a very engaged city. I mean, there's a lot of folks that are very engaged on social that are Lakewood residents. And yes, I definitely get many phone calls for Lakewood, Colorado. But I think we have one of the more engaged citizenries, to be honest. Folks really do interact with our content a lot and, and share it as well. So it's, it's really nice to see.
And, and then later on, and other things over there under the, and, and there's some guidelines, there were a number of areas where there's the caveat, unless otherwise determined by the city manager. Does the city manager do that a lot?
Could you give me an example of what you're asking?
Well, I mean, I'm trying to look it down on page, I don't know what page it is, but there is.
I mean, it would say the short answer is no, he's not coming. I think it's because it references our policy. So our actual adopted policies related to social media guidance say that it's the city manager's designee who's responsible. And so the city manager has designated the communications division to be responsible for this. So we're in regular communication with him. And we make him aware of trends or things that we're seeing or provide him updates on statistics or posts, let's say, that are very popular. And he might check in with me and just say, how are things going? What's the tone? What are you seeing? So we regularly communicate. But he's rarely coming to me and saying, you need to post XYZ, or you need to take this down, or you need to do that.
So there's not a permanent cycle that adds to time and things to do that? All right.
But I will tell you that, you know, obviously, we err on the side of discretion. So if there ever were something that were that we know might be controversial or something where we need to check in, we obviously are, are going to him and talking with him or talking to legal or whoever. And there's, like I said, very open lines of communication on that front. So we're not working in a vacuum.
And then I, I guess that I will just point out to you, you know, and I understand you're, you're working on trying to do that, that one of the things that I hear a lot of comments about, about, about things that, that are out there, but they don't convey any information, real information, are public notices, like notices of hearings or notices of something that's been applied for or something like that. And usually it's, that's what it says, okay? And, 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 and it doesn't provide real clarity as to a link to get more information. For instance, if someone wants to, it, it says, there's a comment period. But if you want to get some more information to be able to look at that so you can decide whether you want to comment, that's very difficult to track down from what we, the very abbreviated public notice formats that we use in, across a number of departments to be able to go and do that. And it's, it also isn't very easy to, to do a vote from a public notice to go to the website to try to find a public notice with a, with an actual link to a bigger file that's got, got information. So that can be something you could look at as your work evolves.
Thank you for that feedback.
Other comments, questions? I have a couple. Otherwise, Mr. Bokey, did you have your hand up?
Nope. All right, thanks. Just final comments, no, no questions. So first, I understand the pain of Lakewood, Colorado. I've ordered takeout from there accidentally before, so. It doesn't always work. It did not, but the Wingstop in Lakewood made it right, so I appreciate it. I appreciate that about a month and a half ago, it was mentioned that you would do, be doing a sort of a soft launch of the new branding and new website and that sort of thing. And that was coupled with the increase in volume of our social media posts, both for the city and for the police department. And I've heard lots of feedback from members of our community that really appreciate it. And that's represented in the data that you show as well. So, so thank you for that. And that's represented in the data that you show as well. So, so thank you for that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Uh, just a couple of questions. So one of the I guess positives or attributes of what you're working on with the medallion, with the color tones is to utilize the medallion over different colors for specific marketing events like the Fiesta de Familia. Another example of that that we could pop up and, and show. Maybe Derek can do that.
We can show you a digital copy, yes.
Yeah, while you're looking at that. And the next question is the utilization of the, the medallion versus the seal. Is it clear to folks when that will be used? Because I'm looking at our agenda for tonight. We've got the seal as opposed to the medallion. So would this be an official document that would have the seal versus the medallion?
Correct. So the seal has, it's very specific and that's, the city clerk holds the seal. And the city clerk, it has oversight as to where that's used in your practice. He's on official documents. So your agendas, your proclamations, for example. So that's, that's when the seal would be used. So the likelihood that we're ever going to use the seal on things, we, we wouldn't unless we were updating a template for the city clerk.
How about the letterhead?
Um, that will be conference. Actually, we're, we're meeting with the city clerk to discuss with her updating the letterhead and actually also creating a separate letter, letterhead that would just be citywide because it's more appropriate for a letter coming from the mayor and the council to come from the mayor and the council versus if I'm writing you an infraction or something or I'm sending you a warning notice, I don't necessarily need to have the mayor and the city council on the seal on that. So that's one thing that we'll be working with the city clerk to update those templates as well. So that each department and division can have something that's appropriate for the type of messaging that they're putting out.
So the seal with the color could be reserved for council. So people see that, you know, the gold leaf or whatever, the green and the blue, that could be reserved for us.
Yes.
The other question, you know, we, we chatted some time ago about the, this branding exercise in the context of signage. And one of the big issues were the gateway signs, vis a vis the park signs that were proposed, vis a vis the logo change and the branding. Uh, you know, and I for one, not that it matters tonight, but I for one, I've never been a huge fan of the color tones or the style of the gateway signs because they don't match anything. Uh, and so I guess my question is, you know, we spent a boatload of money, taxpayers' money on those. Is there a possibility, the structure is one thing, the lettering is another. So the structure's in place, the lighting's in place, the electrical is in place. One wonders if over time, if we adopt this, could we not transition to something consistent for the gateway signs? What are your thoughts? Should we and could we?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that's actually a great conversation to have in a couple of weeks when we'll be back before you on the park signage and the wayfinding conversation. Because that is something that you'll hear from the, the consultants that we have working on that. And I will say they are trying to marry the two, but that's a perfect example of without a brand guide, there wasn't really any guide. So it was kind of like, hey, we like this, let's do it. Even though maybe it doesn't conform to other signs in the city. So that speaks to the importance of having a guide so that now going forward. But it's definitely something that can be looked at over time. And if that's something that council chooses to do, we can definitely have that conversation if that's the direction that's given.
Got it. Final question, just in terms of process procedure, you know, we're, we appreciate receiving the city brand guide and communications and marketing plan. You know, as policymakers, our policy is to have open and, and transparent communication in the city that powers down to you folks and the city manager, you come up with the plan. I don't know how in the weeds we were able to get in terms of tweaking the plan as presented or not. But that may be a conversation with Mr. Coffield. If there's further discussion to be had, maybe we can take this under advisement if need be. Not sure you were looking for feedback tonight as opposed to more presenting the plan. But you heard some differences of opinion, obviously, on the plan. So I just want to respect that too. But I do appreciate the plan as presented. I, I think it's more clear to me that we've got the medallion versus the mark versus the seal. And I think that's positive. You know, I look on social media a little bit. And I more look at the content. Certainly the, the branding comes to me as a visual. But it's really the content. And you guys are doing fabulous on the content promotion as well. Yeah, I think it's really good. And engagement again appears to be great. If we can somehow continue to stand top of them, my, my Lakewood or the, whatever that group is, my Lakewood life or whatever, some people do a pretty good job just to kind of tone down the misinformation. That would be an awesome thing to do too, because that's consistent messaging in itself, right? Factual information. Sometimes they get off track on that.
And just really quickly, Derek has a couple of different examples of where the brand life was, brain guide was applied, excuse me.
Okay. So this is like a flyer or it's actually a postcard handout that went to everyone. So this is one example of the branding. And then this also falls within the brand.
Okay.
So it shows the versatility of where, but if you can see that this was blue and a green logo at the top of these other colors, it'd be quite distracting. And then for this one, there, it's not the focal point of what's happening. You want people to read, look at the trees. So this is where the color exists on the page because that's where you want people's eyes to go. And that is just kind of an endorsement.
On the bottom.
So it does say, yeah, it says Lakewood on there.
And then on the backside, it was a mailer.
It's a mailer.
The backside. And what it was, was that was announcing the changes to the code and making sure people, and again, we weren't putting everything on there because it's not realistic and people aren't going to read a lot anyway. It was redirecting them to the website that was set up where they could find more information about the
flip side would have the city of Lakewood with the mark. Yeah, please.
And I, that's what I was just like, I know if you flipped it over, you would see the actual, the other logo and it says city of Lakewood. So there's places on there when you have the, the button, whatever we're calling it again. And then it does say city of Lakewood, whether it's a line of type, something that stands out. So you can tell that it is the city, correct?
Yes, correct. Oh, yeah.
Again, not being a brand guy per se, I do like designing. But this would be one where I would probably have the city of Lakewood on one of the, on one side of the other. Yeah. So it's a little bit more visual. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah. I think that's a maple.
I made sure.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we turn to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Update on Transportation and Utilities specifically. And I believe Tiffany Spears, Glenn, will appear virtually on this to lead us through that particular portion of tonight's agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate the ability to be here remotely. I'm going to share my screen to walk through a presentation. Oh. If you stop sharing your screen there in City Hall, I'll be able to do it from here.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay.
We start on page 42 of our packet, if that helps everyone.
All right. So as you're well aware, I've been in front of the council since this last fall trying to bring you in pieces, things that are being considered as part of the large 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. And this evening I'll be touching base on a few things for the transportation and utility areas of interest within our comprehensive plan. Just a reminder to anyone and everyone that we now have two places where you can get the latest information regarding this whole process and also provide both public comment and volunteer to be involved on various advisory groups that we have for specific topics. One is just cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview. And the other is lakewoodwasp speaks.org. And then if you go to these two websites, you can also see both Planning Commission and City Council sessions that have been held starting last September, actually, so almost a year ago. Talking again about topic by topic at various meetings. And then down at the bottom here, you'll see, we've sent one of these out so far. I'll be doing another one later in September where we're sending out now where people subscribe for information regarding the 24 periodic review. And again, you can sign up at the cityoflakewood.us option as well as lakewoodwasp speaks.org. So if you were to look at the way the comprehensive plan is going to be reorganized come 2024 in order to be responsive to state law changes and just update it to the current layout of the Growth Management Act and ease of reference. What we're talking about tonight is capital facilities and essential public facilities, transportation, and then utilities. But among the other chapters are all of the other required topics as part of the comprehensive plan, some of which we've already talked about in study sessions before this. And then there will be a number of appendices that are set up as reference documents to the comprehensive plan, including all of the neighborhood plans, the subarea plans and demographics for the city, for instance. And then also our outside partner capital facilities plans, other types of infrastructure planning that may be appropriate to incorporate. So speaking about transportation and regulations, there have been a number of changes in the last few years with a focus on housing and climate change and environmental and equity justice within land use planning. And this is affecting the transportation elements and utility elements as well. But in a quick summary, what's required to be in our elements is air, water, ground transportation facilities, including transit. And then an identification of state owned facilities. So obviously for us here in Lakewood I five, you also need to be recording the intergovernmental coordination efforts which have occurred. Just a few weeks ago, I convened all of our utility providers as well as education partners, the library district, West Pierce Fire and Rescue and others to all get together and start to talk about how we can all be collaborating on this effort. And I met just today, actually, with Tacoma Public Utilities to continue that conversation. There's also a focus now on active transportation, meaning anything outside of a car essentially. And then also environmental justice. And then adopted levels of service. So making sure that the city comprehensive plan reflects all of the current accepted levels of service for arterials, transit routes and highways. There needs to be a 10 plus year traffic forecast. And this will now be affected by those housing bills that were adopted this last legislative session in particular regarding increasing the number of units per lot as well as increasing accessory dwelling units. And both of those bills increase it even more near a transit station. But all of that will affect traffic forecasting as well. So we'll need to update things that were included in the 2015 version of the plan. There also needs to be a specific pedestrian bicycle component. And as you're aware, I think the Public Works Engineering Department completed a non-motorized transportation plan update earlier this year. We'll be engaged with looking at that as part of this process and also perhaps updating some information provided in it to be able to answer what's required in state law. Another newer priority is reducing vehicle miles traveled, including an analysis of greenhouse gas emissions and how many per capita vehicle miles are traveled within Lakewood. Some of this is work that the city started a few years ago with its energy and climate change chapter. But we will need to be updating that as well as the transportation element now to again include what is now required per state law pretty explicitly. There also needs to be looking at future funding capability for probable, against probable funding sources, excuse me, and also a multi-year financing plan. Some of this is assuming that there will be everything handled by the city itself rather than with third parties. But as the council knows, sewer, water and power are all handled with third party utilities. So when we talk about analysis, analyzing future funding capability, that's going to be done as best we can in cooperation with those utility partners, looking at where they may be, may be looking to improve systems and, and capacity of their infrastructure and how that may affect things that the city's doing. The capital facilities element must include an inventory of green infrastructure. And that is not only parks and open space, but things like low impact development systems or pervious pavement roads or things like that, that the city may have or develop over time. There needs to be a good faith effort to look at the capital facilities for all the public entities. And that's again, something that we've started recently. And we also need an inventory of telecommunications. So that work is all underway. Stepping back for a minute and looking at review and certification of the city's comprehensive plan. Over time, since the Puget Sound Regional Council was formed, its purpose in part was to look at comprehensive plans to certify them in relation to a regional transportation plan in order to in turn approve applications from Lakewood for funding that comes through the PSRC from the federal government. That is a little bit expanded now to where they are also looking at housing elements in relation to transportation planning. And so what this slide is providing you is just an idea of some of the things that the PSRC has said. This is where we will be focusing our review come 2024. And these are some things to watch for. So again, making sure that there is that demand management, including non-motorized, looking at climate change, air quality and vehicle miles traveled, looking at equity, equity in terms of transit oriented development and also housing supply and choices near transit. Things to watch for internal consistency as well as external consistency. Making sure that we have a complete project list or finance plan and making sure that we are in good coordination and consistent coordination regarding state facilities. So again, running I five through the middle of the city, we need to be working with Wash Dot. In the utility element, it's looking at sewer, water, fire, electrical, telecommunications and natural gas. And again, this is all things that we will need to be partnering with outside utilities on to, to gather this information and then be planning over time. And so that work has begun. I again, met today with Tacoma Public Utilities and part of that conversation was about the telecommunications. The other utilities that we are in communication with is the sewer utility at the county, Lakewood Water and then PSC as well as Lakewood Light and Power. So all of that information is being gathered now to incorporate. In addition to that, we are working with Pierce and Sound Transit and Wash Dot. And then we are partnering as well in our planning with the county and then Stillicum University Place in Tacoma as our adjacent cities to Lakewood city boundaries. There will be those appendices that I mentioned at the start of my presentation. And some of the appendices will be, for instance, the most recent Transportation Improvement Program, the 23 Non-Motorized Transportation Plan Update, the ADA Transition Plan, which is going to be completed sometime this fall, the most recent pavement condition and traffic volume reports, and then information we can gather from the transit agencies about their capital improvement plans. And then utilities also their CIPs and clean energy plans, which they are required to develop by the federal government. This is the general timeline. Again, just as a reminder to those who may be watching, May 1st of 2024 is the date where we will begin formal review at the Planning Commission. Although they certainly continue to talk about the 24 review pretty much every meeting at this point, topic by topic. And then at this point, we are assuming that they will be done by the end of June. And then the council will pick up these proposed amendments as one big package come July 1st of 24. Between this process at the commission and the council, we will also be providing our information to the Department of Commerce and PSRC for their comment and suggested edits if they may have any. So that will be in front of council before it takes final action next year. Once more, the two websites where people can go on the city of Lakewood's website at 24 Periodic Review or lakewoodwasp speaks.org. And then before I stop, I would just say, everything that I just said, it, please don't take it to mean that we're starting from scratch. The city has great relationships already with these utilities and our other external partners and agencies. I don't mean to imply that that's not there. I've been able actually to rely on our existing good relationships to be able to expedite all of these conversations. So it's really a matter of updating data that we have in our comprehensive plan and just continuing to strengthen the relationship and communications that we have with those other groups. So with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for the overview. Any questions? Again, Mr. Brennster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Spear, on your list of documents that we're sort of going through, and I don't know what you call those, on one of your most recent slides, that it didn't include the there, there was, there was a report that heavily influenced there was a report that heavily influenced the current transportation element. It's called the Transportation Background Report, which is was done a good while ago, but it was, it seemed that it was something that influenced the current wording and version and considerations in the transportation element. Are we moving away from that to where we've done more recent studies to do that, or is that still a core baseline document for us?
I will need to go back and look at it, and I have not had a chance to do that yet, but if it is old enough to where it was part of the 2015 update, I'll need to check with Public Works Utilities to see if they've done anything more recent than that report that would replace its information. If not, then yes, we would continue to rely on that. We're also going to be relying on the environmental impact statements that were done not only for the comprehensive plan in 2015, but then the subarea plans in 2018 and 2021. And there was a lot of transportation analysis in those two efforts.
Okay, and then I guess that I would also say that on the you indicated there'd need to be some attention paid to levels of service on the roads that are here and that you know, currently, we're, we sort of look at what we've identified from A through F, the levels of service on most of the roads in the city. But it was, I think the current version of the plan more or less says this is what they are. It doesn't really speak to how to improve them, or should they be improved? But I would say that the lowest levels of service that are currently in the plan dealt with Washington Boulevard and Gravel Lake Drive, where we've invested millions of dollars now to to remove those traffic signals and move traffic better. So I think that there's some sort of a would expect that by 2024, even though we may not have a lot of speed data, we ought to be able to establish better target levels of service for those roads. And I think the other, the other level of service F road was Silicon Boulevard, which while we're doing a lot of work on that, as far as the service and sidewalks, I don't think we're removing very many traffic signals, so that may not be impacting that, but if if we can capture in 2024 the improved level of service, at least on the JBLM North project to sort of justify their where we're going. And then I guess my last comment is that there is, you know, like with utilities, we're not the transit provider. We're reliable on a number of others to be the transit providers. Yet they seem to be asking us to dwell on the equity elements of transit. And so I'm concerned that we don't fill our plan with policies that really need to be somebody else's policies. You know, I think maybe in both in both transportation and utilities and we've got a lot of policies of where we're saying we'd really like somebody else to do this as opposed to policies about things that the city can actually do. And so some simplification that has good policies that identify actions that we can take that are in our lane. It would be better and because there's, there's a lot of policies in the transportation and utility section that, you know, the city has no impetus to actually change to be able to go, go, go and do that. I think the one significant, two significant utility issues that seem to be missing is we really do have a policy or a practice, but not a written policy that says we expect utilities and we will forge agreements with utilities for them to pay as appropriate or allowed when they utilize city infrastructure, either under it, on it, or over it, to be able to go and do that. And I think we should document that we're while we're not a provider, we're we incur some costs and we want to recoup that cost when utilities make use of city infrastructure, being able to go and do that. And, and, and the other thing is, is that I think it's particularly with water, maybe with some others, is as you mentioned, to tie it to what limitations do our current utility systems have on increases to density? And analyze that and take a look at some defining policies in the 2024 update that we can apply to say if you can't get to this point, then the density can't grow in a specific area of the city. But you know, thank you for the update. I look forward to some more.
Any other questions? Well, great. Thank you, Ms. Spear. Appreciate the update. I'm sure there'll be more to follow.
Thank you.
So that concludes the two items for discussion on the agenda for tonight. The items tentatively scheduled for the next regular council meeting on September five include principally a few proclamations and a business showcase, including the Declaration of September eleven, twenty twenty-three as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance with our police chief and our West Pierce Fire and Rescue Chief Jim Sharp. So that will be a good one to attend, and I think there's a September eight event as well at City Hall. I think Mr. Coffield will probably give us a reminder about during city manager comments. So moving right along, we'll go to reports by the city manager, and then we'll follow with council comments. We do have an executive session later on. So please be mindful of that. Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Just a few updates for you this evening. So remember last year, the, or it was earlier this year, the council agreed to provide some funding in support of the Buffalo Soldiers Museum, which is holding a Labor Day honoring our military event on this coming Monday on Labor Day from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. over at Cheney Stadium. And as a part of that event, there's actually a softball game between two military-oriented teams called the Rutgers and the Redtail Hawks. And so the museum was kind enough to bring over 100 tickets for us, including 20 for the VIP seating area. So if you have an interest in any one of those tickets, let me know. And then what we're going to do is we're going to, like beginning tomorrow, make them available at the farmer's market. They are free. But they were kind enough to bring those over to us, and so we'll try and distribute those out, out to the public as well. Along those lines, the next major event that's coming up is at Forest Silicon Park is the Fiesta de la Familia event. And I think as you're aware, there'll be a representative from the Mexican consulate will be attending, and so that event is from 12 to 5:00, and at 1:00 p.m., and this event is on Saturday, September ninth. And at 1:00 p.m., there'll be a scheduled opportunity for remarks by the mayor and hopefully the representative from the consulate as well. So they apparently have been tracking what we're doing here in Lakewood and wanted to come down and kind of see the show, so to speak. Very positive reflection on our, on our community. Wanted to let you know that, you know, our discussions with the Camp, with Camp Murray regarding, you know, some opportunities to make some improvements to their boat launch in American Lake have yielded some very positive results. We learned late last week that the new chief of staff of the Washington National Guard is supportive of developing a master plan for this location in partnership with the city. Actually, the city is going to be actually leading the charge in terms of funding it, but it will be a joint partnership between both agencies. So next steps right now is really to craft kind of an MOU of some sort outlining, you know, who, what, where, when, because they have changeover in leadership and such. And so Jim Barmgarten, who transferred from the governor's office to Camp Murray to be their lead on legislative issues, had suggested that so that as this project moves forward, there's a historical documentation and memorializing, you know, what has happened and what is supposed to happen. So more, more to come on that. I think if you remember earlier this year, unfortunately, we did not receive the raised planning grants that we had applied for $850,000 to begin to do some conceptual planning, actually, and some free engineering for the Green Loop in the, in the town center. I think I sent you some stats. It was a very, very competitive process. But what we did learn is we actually did very well. We got positive feedback from USDOT. There's eight ranking criteria that they evaluate. We achieved high ranking on four, and on the other four, we received medium ranking. In order to get funding, you have to have six high. However, they provided some really excellent comments and input on how we can better present our application. And I think, as I had mentioned before, this is a, you know, this is not quite frankly, I wasn't expecting to get it the first year. I think if we did, that would have been a bit of a minor miracle. But certainly, as we look out, you know, next year and into, you know, and beyond, I think, you know, eventually we will be able to secure the funds. So my recommendation will be that we do move forward as part of our federal legislative agenda in 2024. And I think their NOFA is expected to come out in, in November, and then the application period will open up in February, which is a little bit of a longer timeline than last year. If you remember last year, it kind of came out. We had like 30 days to apply. So I think that was part of it as well, whereas other communities had been in the queue previously, so they were kind of in a much better position. But, but to get four out of eight high rankings, I think is, you know, very good, and we still have some work to do, but I'm confident that, you know, maybe this year or next year, that we'll be able to secure those, those funds. I'd previously given you an update on what the city had submitted for LTAC applications for the 2024 grant awards. Wanted to let you know, we did submit an application to request LTAC funds totaling $35,000 to help sponsor when the Gimhay delegation comes here in, in, in July. And along those lines, wanted to let you know as part of, of developing some ideas and how to showcase not just Lakewood, but our region, we have received some positive feedback from the JBLM Garrison Commander Colonel Park that yes, doing some kind of a debrief or a briefing of some sort on who and what JBLM is on post for the delegation is something that they would be interested, as well as perhaps even some kind of a demonstration of the military, of our military on post, if, if the training kind of aligns when they're, we're in town. I've also reached out to the Boeing Company, and my contact there had said that yes, if you want to bring them up either to the Everett Plant or to the Renton Plant for a tour of the facility, they are willing and able to do that. And the reason, the reason that, 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 is it in Kent? I thought they put them together in Renton. Kent, okay. I stand corrected, Kent.
They do have one in Renton, too. They're everywhere.
Well, he, he did say Renton. He said the Renton plant, so I'm just mimicking what I was told. So I was told the Renton plant. But if you recall, when we were there, they had talked about how they are looking to expand their Gimhay airport into an international hub to include non-stop flights from the U.S. to Gimhay as opposed to having to go through Seoul to get to other parts of the peninsula. So we thought this might be a good idea for them to see how Boeing airplanes are built and maybe give them a one-up, you know, against some of the other competitions such as Airbus and such, so.
We might like the Aerospace Museum, too.
Yeah.
Right down the street there.
Farmer's Market continues through September nineteenth, you know, tomorrow. Unfortunately, the summer concert for tomorrow I just learned has been canceled because apparently there's going to be rain, so. Also on Wednesday, we put on your calendar last week, our two-two, the Striker Brigade is having an opportunity to all of you, all of us, to come over for lunch from noon to 1:30. Unfortunately, I've already been booked. I'm giving a State of the City address to the Clover Clover Park Rotary Club. But if any of you would like to attend, and I would highly encourage you to do so if you can, let us know, and we'll get you on this week, Wednesday at noon to 1:30. And then later on in the afternoon, there's going to be an opportunity for like some soccer games and football games. But that's only if the two-two actually gets into those, kind of the the semifinals and the finals. I guess it's a post-wide event. And I remember decades ago when I served there, I remember the unit that I was in got into the football finals and we did kick butt. We, damn right, we won. Did we win? Did we? That's funny. Did we win? Yeah, it was, it was a spanking. Yeah. Yeah. So actually, they didn't invite us back the next year. Well, we were deployed, so that was their excuse. Also, as Mayor mentioned, next week you'll have your proclamation regarding nine eleven remembrance, and then on September eighth, there'll be a remembrance ceremony here at the City Hall Plaza. September ninth is the Fiesta de la Familia, and then on September twenty-seventh, over at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda, is going to be our volunteer recognition event. We're bringing that back since we hadn't done that in 2019 from 5:00 to 6:30. So your boards, commissions, and all other city volunteers, September twenty-seven. And also on that evening at 6:30, so right after that, Pierce County Council member is holding a District Six meeting, which is the full city council, and they're going to be, the county council will be meeting at the DuPont City Council Chambers at Cheney Hitchen. So with that, that is my report, Mayor.
So I'll open up for questions. I just had a quick one on this Wednesday, the thirtieth. What's, what's the what all is going on there? I know it's two-two brigade.
It's lunch.
It's just lunch.
Lunch on post. That's correct. So if you like chili mac, they'll probably have chili mac.
Great.
You'll go through the chow hall. Right, right, Councilmember Anderson, he knows.
They have an award-winning chow hall. Is that where it's going to be?
I think it's actually, I think it's at one of their bistros. So it's, it's in your, it's actually, I don't think it's in the chow hall. I think it's in one of the bistros.
So again, the
Yeah.
concessionaire barbecue.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. But hey, it's about the relationships and hanging out with the uniforms. And they're very, they're going to be very, very good to you.
I'm sure. Yeah. That would be triple booked, but I'll see what I can do.
So I'm actually trying to bug out of the, out of the Clover Park Rotary presentation. Well, you know, easy come, easy go. So if chili mac's involved.
I'll let you have the chili mac. Let me have a quart here, because I'm winding down. Got a damn hearing at the very end here Wednesday. Any other questions for Mr. Coffield, Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, on the items for the agenda for, for our next meeting, there's a consent agenda item regarding an amendment to the contract with the, with the Tetra folks regarding the Wap Lake talent treatment. Is that on a consent agenda because it's more of a bookkeeping adjustment, or is there some, something of consequence in that amendment?
It's, it's the former council member Brandstetter, and it's within budget, and it's basically a change order.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But if the council wishes to put it on for action, we can certainly do that. Non-consent, rather.
Other questions? I have a couple, just real quick, not necessarily which you brought up, but on the presentation tonight on the the branding plan, one of the things that came to my attention, which I probably should have previously, is we actually have city code that deals with the logo. So is that something where we have to formally adopt a change to city code? Because at a minimum, whether or not the, the mark has colors in it or not, it does say the logo shall be as adopted as depicted below in the code. And then there's also a type style that's different than what we saw tonight. So we've probably got to look at that to be, you know, if we're talking about consistency, we have to do something consistent.
So Mayor, we'll take a look at that and report back to you.
It's, it's 1.25. We, Lakewood Minister, 1.25. We actually had, I think shortly before the city manager came, 2012, we had council discussion and adopted those jettisoning the we had council discussion and adopted those jettisoning the Laverne and Shirley L Lakewood.
Remember that.
So you want to get rid of that, and we adopted what we're using now.
Yeah, and the big, we had a lot of script. At the time, we went from script to that.
It was called the Laverne and Shirley logo.
It was cursive. It was attractive, but it was, you know.
And this was after Claudia Thomas had ordered a hundred-year supply of memos that say from the desk of the mayor and have that L on it, right?
Yeah. So anyway, we had to look at that, just to be consistent. And then the second question I just had out of the reviews, I went over to Forest Oak and Park, looking at the scorched areas of the park. So was there a plan for that, or just kind of let it take over its natural state? The reason why I ask is there's, interestingly enough, a lot of metal shards of stuff that was probably left over from the farm way back when. So as you're running through the trails and you look at stuff, there's a lot of rusty metal stuff that just kind of got unearthed when all the branch and rubble stuff got burned down.
So, so, so a couple of things. One, so those are the remnants of the pigpens. And then there's also, there's also just bottles and cans and such. And so the M and O crew in the near future, they have it on their work plan. They're going to do a comprehensive police call through that area and just kind of clean it all up. And there are some areas where it's worse than others.
Right.
And I've been out there myself and just kind of seen that as well. So that that'll occur before the end of the summer.
Got it.
Also, Puget Sound Energy is, there's a couple of, you know, their poles came across. And so they're going to be, because of the fire, they apparently need to replace those poles. So they'll be out there later this summer, if not sooner, actually, to replace those as well. I don't think the wires, the power lines themselves are impacted. But I think just out of a level of caution, they want to replace the poles. And then as far as, you know, it's, it'll grow, it's, it'll grow back.
Yeah, it's fun to make sure some of the, whatever, it sounds like we're on top of it, all the jagged metal stuff hanging out out there.
Yeah, but but those are the old, those are the old, actually, Scott Williams, I think I'll have it up. Maybe I'll see if I can find it and send it to you, because he sent me an old picture back in the day when the pigpens were out there. And that's, that's mostly what that, what that stuff.
Very good.
That stuff is. I will say this, I was out there late on Friday after it was in the evening, and it was just quiet. There was nothing. And then I went out there. I was out there on Sunday night after the fire, and there wasn't anything. And then I went out yesterday, last week, on Tuesday morning, and there was birds chirping. There was, I mean, it was like Mother Nature had just come back literally overnight. And even just walking around, you know, you could see the flowers popping up, you know, where the, where the fire didn't quite get them. It was, it was a kind of a nice little lesson for, it would have been nice to have, you know, a bunch of children go out there and see how quickly that, you know, Mother Nature recovers from something like that. So.
If it gets a little water, yeah.
So if, is there any opportunity for residents of the community to participate in any sort of cleanup? I did have a couple emails, a couple, actually, a couple texts regarding that, just to people wanting to do something.
If there are folks that want to do that, let us know. We can point them in, you know, to our Public Works Department, Public Works and Parks and Recreation, and, you know, schedule some time. But again, our crew is going to go out there and just kind of, now, the heavy stuff, we would, our staff will take care of that. But like regular litter cleanup, if folks just want to go out there and do it, that's fine, too. They don't have to coordinate with us. It's, they don't need our permission. And, you know, so. But I would stay away from kind of the heavy stuff because it's probably dangerous and.
Yeah, I was, that's what I was wondering, is there dangerous stuff? Is there, are there things that the city is giving people to go clean up, like bags or pickers or something like that? Is there anything organized?
There's a group, you can, we can point them toward Mary Dawsworth and her team. And like I said, if they want to go out there, we can.
Okay.
Point them in the right direction.
That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Bokey, a couple of questions. In reviewing, what is this step, step flyer, the step eight from Workforce Central?
I don't have it on my fingertips. It's a.
I mean, do they work for the city, or they just come out here and they're just?
No, no, actually, they reached out to us. And actually, they're very grateful that the city has provided them this location to be able to do this, to focus on the Lakewood community. And let me see here. Yeah, it's youth training sessions for our youth. And I think they're working, probably working with the school district to get the word out. And they're having one, two, three, four, five, six. So they're having eight sessions each two hours, beginning on September nineteenth through November fourteenth, from one-thirty PM to three-thirty. And going to be here, held here at City Hall. So.
So anybody can arrive to that, or it's certain ages?
Yeah, it's for youth in Lakewood. So, and I know they just recently put together some kind of a flyer that they sent over to us to get out in the community as well. But I imagine they're probably working with the school district and other schools as well.
And I want to congratulate you, you know, the ball has moved after, I'm in a mea culpa here, kind of, that the, the guard has actually like made some movement on the the beach or whatever, the boat launch at Camp Murray. So now we can get excited about it. So my next question will be, have you thought about how much we're going to have to invest in that?
Absolutely not, Council.
Really make improvements, plans, you know.
Absolutely not. We have not.
The boat launch.
Absolutely not.
What's the bottom?
We have not. Right now, the process is to develop a plan to determine what those costs are. And so that will, that that will come. It will probably be an amount bigger than a breadbasket. So I'll just, I'll just let you know that.
In five years, or the three years of that.
Well, actually, yeah, it'll probably be three years, because, you know, the opportunity to apply for funding is really through the RCO process. And but but Edgewater Park is encused before that one. But if we're ready next, this time next door, we would have, in order to get in the queue for twenty-five, we would have to have that master plan done, and it would have to be, you know, reviewed and approved by you by, like, next April or May. I just don't see that happening. Just given everything else we have going on.
And then can I ask quickly about this authorizing the execution of an agreement for the Western State Hospital Plan Review next week?
So, Councilmember, that is, that is still tentative. We are, we've been waiting for a number of months from DSHS to give us an understanding of what their needs are, because they would like to have a little bit of expedited plan review as their stuff comes in, and we're willing to accommodate that. And so then we bring in, you know, a third-party contractor to do that. We do that for a lot of large projects. But the ball is in their court. We're waiting on them. And so we keep bumping it. It was supposed to happen like several months ago. But again, they, when they're ready, we'll bring it forward to you.
So we'll just wait on that then, because we didn't get a chance to discuss it tonight.
It's, it's a, the only reason it's coming forward to the council is because it's over, for over fifty thousand dollars. But again, but again, it would be paid by DSHS. So it would be, it would be completely reimbursed by that.
Great, thank you.
And again, we do that for other projects in the city where somebody wants expedited review or something.
Make them pay for it.
Yeah, but they pay for it. That's correct.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? Let's go to council comments. Mindful that we do have an executive session, Mr. Bokey. Thank you for being mindful of the executive session. Councilmember Bell, Mr. Brandsetter, Mr. Lawrence Hall, Mr. Anderson. Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board was canceled this month. It's normal not to have one in August. So that passed last week without happening. I had some contact with folks raising money for the barn project, indicated that they were, yes, I guess, the, the input from Clark, the contractor, had been less than expected. As far as participating, at least they hadn't mailed anything down. So I contacted man I know who's a, it's basically business development person for one of the subs that had put us in contact with him originally. And he and I have crossed messages, and he says that they still are very interested in participating in that project. The other thing I heard, just kind of as an aside visiting, was that it might not surprise anyone that DSHS is difficult to work with, that they're three to four months behind because of things that DSHS won't get around to doing. So.
Thank you, Councilmember. One of the things that we are waiting on, that they cannot proceed on until they address, is where is their water going to come from? And they need to be working with the, another key state agency, Department of Health. And so we're waiting on that. We can't issue a building permit until they figure that out.
So evidently, contractors, contractors being held up by DSHS, not the other way around, which is. Tacoma might have some extra water now that they've got thirty percent more capacity with the reduction of one user.
I actually had participated years ago in the rate-setting process, because we represented the mill.
Yeah. I was shocked to read that, though, about, I mean, thirty percent of the water capacity goes to one user.
And they, and they get a heck of a deal on it. So, you know, we'll see. And I, oh, I just note that forty-plus years ago, I played in one of my last football games in something similar to that, which the city manager mentioned. And our Navy team trying to get a trip to the Asian Pacific Finals didn't do that well. We were average ten years older than the eighteen, nineteen-year-olds that were on the ship that came off. And several service-connected disabilities were obtained that day. So, but I'm going to try to make it out to the two-two thing on Wednesday.
Very good, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the back-to-school event at, that's Clover Park School District. It was absolutely a lot of fun, a lot of activities. I have some pictures. I was, I tried to get them up on Facebook. They don't look kind of good, but they had Continental Breakfast, Michael Powers was playing, and Josephine Howell. And they packed to stay, and they, they were, everybody was in a good mood. We had a little dance thing going on. And it was, it was a lot of fun. The students, the, the staff, everybody was in the right frame of mind. The music made it happen. It was a lot of fun. It was great. Okay. And then I did attend a police barbecue for fifteen, twenty minutes there. Wasn't during the barbecue period. It was after the lunch and before the dinner. But I did get to enjoy the coffee stand there of the chaplains were making their special coffee mokas and so forth. So I had one of those. That was really good. But at the school, the students had, there was five students that spoke. And they had, their purpose was to let the teachers know what they needed from the teachers. So they would tell them, you know, you need to remember things like, we can't, all students don't learn the same way. You need to be patient with, I mean, they, it was just like they knew they were at a safe place, that they could say what was on their mind, and they did. And it was well-received. So that's all I have.
Very good. I, too, with city manager, attended the LPD barbecue, appreciation barbecue for members of the police department last week. It was actually just a great event. I was at the evening changeover shift by eight o'clock to about nine o'clock. And so met a lot of the young officers there, and young and old, I should say. Yeah, yeah, they're all, they're all young compared to Mr. Caulfield. So that was a good event and well-appreciated. So this week, on the thirty-first, we've got a bunch of stuff. I've got a meeting with Congresswoman Strickland. I think the city manager is going to focus in on that, or maybe just me on the update for all things Lakewood for the quarter. And then later that afternoon, I am going to a meeting involving some event for the America River Cross, and all the mayors in the area are going to it. It's at General Farmer's Home in Stillicum, the mayor of Tacoma, the mayor of Lakewood, the mayor of Dupont, the mayor of Stillicum, and a bunch of folks. So I didn't know if it was a command performance or not, but I'm going to be there for that. And I'll let you know what transpires on maybe emergency management updates or something, or cross perspective. But I'll find out and let you know. And then finally, that is my last day of private practice, the thirty-first of August. Or so it'll be an interesting day, for sure. With that, we, you know, with all my free time, I'm going to be a deputy prosecuting attorney for Pierce County early the next day. City Council now recessed into executive session for twenty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one sub I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation. The council is not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. And so at this time, we are in recess.